Please have everyone stand for the flag and we're going to be standing for the landing.
My pleasure.
Just to the United States of America and to the Republic of Central.
The Salamaga City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Baca, the people of the Great Hill, the Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaga School District now stands in whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaga City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have just a couple. For three A, we added a program representative information sheet on the PowerPoint to the presentation. In H A, we corrected some type of graphical errors that were correct in the supporting paperwork. For A E, we added the host of office or the assistant superintendent. In nine B, we added the time and place of the early any cataractus association of schools and we have chosen to eliminate the original executive session.
Then I need a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Motion.
Second by Tracy, second by Carrie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion taken. We will move on to our summer activities presentation.
It is my pleasure to introduce Athletic Director of the Department of Odysseus and Water Safety Instructor. Hi guys, thank you for having us, welcome. My portion of the presentation will be a little bit brief because we really want to highlight some of the things that have been going on with our summer swim program. First and foremost, thank you for supporting the summer activities. It is. We're trying to just offer a wide variety. We've added cross-country and wrestling this year on top of what we've had in the past. And there, our numbers were steady. I don't want to tell you they improved drastically, some areas they did, some areas they didn't. There's a number of reasons for that, but I think the students who are participating and the family response we're getting is very positive. Where we are seeing a dramatic increase is in our summer swim program. So Anna signed on about three summers ago, if I'm correct, and we were in need and she took right off. She loves the pool. That's where she would, she likes to be and she's been integral in not only developing the program, but training our lifeguards, which at one point we were in desperate need. And we were up to a healthy eight to 10, right?
10 to 12.
10 to 12. And in these, these lifeguards are getting experienced during the summer swim, but also during the training portions. Anna pushes into our phys ed classes when we have especially like pool emphasis classes. We've brought over the elementary kids from third grade this year for the first time. Thanks and appreciate it. And we're going to just continue to try to expand upon that to utilize our awesome pool. She also coaches cross-country this year and indoor track. So I'm gonna leave that for you.
Alright. Well, like you said, I'm here three years. I've been teaching swimming for probably closer to 20. Started in Frisberg. I've been at Bosse's Panama and then here. So starting that first year, we had six weeks straight, Monday through Thursday. For whoever signed up, we were around 60 to 70 kids we serviced that year. The second year it came back. One of the things I tried to do because we started winding off at the end, I chumped it down into two, three week sessions. So they come Monday through Thursday for three weeks straight. They get 12 lessons. And then I opened it up to another session. So if parents are taking a vacation, they can't make the first session, they have another choice so the kids can still get all 12 lessons. That seems to be working a little bit better. Our second year, the numbers did go up. We had, we serviced 90 kids the second year. This year, I think they got the hang of the system of things and we serviced over 103 kids. My goal, like my max I can take in a three week session would be 120. So I would love to see where we can service 240 kids in the summer. It's very possible, we have the capacity to do that. So my goal in swim lessons is teaching safety, that's first and foremost. I want these kids to learn to come in, know what rules are around the water, what to do, what not to do, the safety precautions. I would love to eventually even integrate that in with our elementary students before summer hits, somewhere around May. I want them to learn what safety is in and around water, know what their surroundings are with our river, our lakes, things like that, things that pay attention to, what they can do to save somebody else's life. So the first few pictures that you see, I do a full week of safety week. The first day you see the most pictures, my kids rescue the guards. I teach them what they can use, what they can do. They can be four years old and save somebody's life if they know what to do. Biggest thing, if you see somebody recognizing there's an emergency, you gotta know what that looks like, then what do you do? So teaching them, where are the lifeguards, who are they, how do you recognize them? What are you going to use around you, what can you do without entering that water? Because number one, don't get in that water to help somebody, now I got two people drowning, okay? So I teach them, what are the things that we have? We use noodles, kickboards. I let them eventually finish with a guard tube, just to have something attached to a rope to climb it in. They think it's the greatest thing in the world, they're wrestling these big adult guards. They think it's amazing that they can pull them in. Just teaching them how to stand, make sure they have a good base. And we also can use our hands and legs, you'll see someone sitting, reaching out with their leg. If there's somebody close, all you gotta do is bend your knee, brings them right into the side, they can hold on to your foot. So I try to teach them as much water safety as possible, like that is my big goal is for kids, I want to eliminate drownings. If there's one kid that takes something home with them to keep something safe, that's really my main goal with the lessons. But I do also do a ton of structure for swimming. So I think Ms. John, I think give her another two years, she's going to have it to where she comes in for swim practice and these kids are already going to have their starts down, they're already going to have their flip turns down, they're going to have all their strokes down. Because the first two weeks, I mean, I'm giving them as much as I possibly can and trying to grow them. So I take kids from four to whatever age wants to come. I have my beginners in one section, it's usually a five to one ratio with a lifeguard. So that lifeguard will be in the water, one-on-one with those kids, I give them the instructions of what they're working on for that day. 90 times out of 10, they're going to do the same thing every time they get in, because these kids are afraid of the water. They don't even want to get their face wet. I got kids who cry. I'll get in with a lot of them, a lot of times I'll step over, I take the kid in my arms, I take them into the water. No, we're going to go underwater, we're going to go together, we have to do it every day, once every day, we're going to get our face wet when you come here. By the end of the class, they're jumping in off the wall. Just getting them comfortable in the water. So they start in that group, then they'll come over to what I consider a level one group. Now I want them getting in that back float for 15 seconds by themselves. I want them to be able to hold a glide with their hands out. I want them to hold a back glide with their arms above their head, all those things. And we have so many awesome tools here too. We have fins available for kids that are age 14, but they work and it's such a confidence builder, I mean, because because once they get comfortable and they're holding on to those floats and stuff, they really do an awesome job doing that. So there's some of the kids wrestling, so that's why I kind of threw some of these pictures in there too, so you could see what the kids are doing. They get to use the noodles, you can reach out just a little farther, you still don't have to get in the water, keeping the most of your body on the deck. In the last two years, I've also put on our Facebook page, just little clips with music. Look, before you leave, we do a whole week, kids get so afraid of that week. They don't want to jump off that diving board, it's scary and I'm like, no, it's the greatest thing we have in this pool, it's the most fun thing we have. And I said, you gotta learn how to fall into water. If you fell into water, are you going to have goggles on? No, are you going to have something with, no. So when we fall into water, what are we going to do? It's that back float, get in that back float, kick over to the ladder, it's safe. I'll be right in the water the first time they jump off, they jump to me, I talk them through it, get them over to the safety. Some of them just need a little extra guidance. But these kids come in, they're so afraid, by the end of the class, they're jumping off that diving board and they're doing awesome stuff, they're having fun. I love the fact that I get to teach customs, it's probably one of my favorite things. There is a short clip video, this is the first. We play tag, we were doing kickboard tag, we got three, three kickboards going, they tagged somebody. They gotta pass the kickboard, the only person they can't tag after passing the kickboard is the same person that tagged them, but if you got three going, it usually keeps them pretty busy. I try to teach them, it's fun around the water, you can do this stuff for the rest of your life, it's nice, it's easy. Again, if you know how to be safe in the water, you can do it for a long time. Sorry, next slide, that's going to kick me back. Stroke refinement, I had a lot of improvement this year, I got to teach way more with our freestyle, our backstroke, just really tuning in on some of their strokes. Again, Ms. John's going to have it a lot easier when it comes time for coaching. They're going to have all their strokes down, they're doing so good. But as the only W S I there, if I'm not there, we can't hold lessons. It's just New York State law. So I'm there every class, every hour of every minute. If I'm there for the open swims, it's a seven hour day, a long day for summers, even though it's a four day, it's still a long day. I am the only one that can test the students. I have to go through, they all get their little booklet, it has a check mark for all the things that they complete through the sessions. So I have to be able to get to each and every student through the class. A lot of times because I know what my guards are doing and I usually can see them at one point or another, I know they've done some stuff. It makes it a lot easier knowing that certain guards can test certain stuff, they know what they're looking for. Because there is certain form, like if you can't keep your head between your arms on your back glide, you really don't get considered, oh, you can get that back glide, because you gotta go two body lengths with, staying parallel with the water. So little things like that, I'm the only one that's in there doing that stuff right now. I separate the groups, so first day, I'm in there, I have to have them get in with me. I set them up into their groups and as I see the progression, I can usually move them. Some kids will move to groups in a 12 session period. In the last 10 minutes, I try to give them free time. And that free time, usually all the stuff we're trying to get them to do, but they're really fighting against it, they go into it all alone. I'm like, see, I told you you can do that, you know, they gotta show that they can do it on their own. But there's a ton of pitchers this year, there's some kids that have just really improved. Again, streamline is huge, they're usually wanting to keep their face out of the water and you feel like this is streamlined. Come on, get that face in there, you know? So we also, I was at, thank you to the school again, kayaking, I got my kayaking certification. We have kayaks in the pool this year. We got to teach you kids how to safely get in and out of a kayak. Another safety portion, what's the worst thing that's going to happen when you're in kayak, you're going to flip over, right? We're going to tip you today, this is what it feels like, you get to tip them over, they got the life vest on, how to wear a life vest properly. I got to add that into my safety week this year, that was huge, that was awesome. The kids really enjoyed getting in those boats. Another thing that we use around here all the time in the rivers. I think it's a really important thing, I like to keep in with my swim lessons on that last safety week. The kids really enjoy, you can see we're tipping on one, just learning to fall with the boat. Okay, fall into the water. And then there's just another video that shows some of the kids that were in the second session. Again, I, we had a great time, 103 kids were there. I was going to say, this year I was able to get out a survey for all the parents. We had 130 sign up online, but we only serviced 103. So I kind of wanted to get some feedback, I go to the parents, I go to the ones I'm servicing to see what else I can do to make things better. So these were the questions that I ended up asking. How satisfied were you with the swim lessons this year? And if unsatisfied, please leave a, I left a section where they could type in whatever they needed. How satisfied were you with the head instructor? If un satisfied, please tell us how we can improve. How satisfied are you with the guards as instructors? If so, give me, you know, again, feedback from every question. Do you feel the staff were appropriately dressed for their job? I do take, I want my guards to be dressed as guards, there's a reason that they should look like their guards, not here trying to sunbake. We're inside, we should have all our appropriate clothing, we did awesome with that, I will give the guards a great job for that. How do you feel about the class size for each level of instruction? Again, my four-year-olds, five-year-olds, I'm only going to do a five to one to a guard. Again, that's why I use so many guards during lessons, because I will have two or three in when needed, so that it's a smaller group, you can pay better attention to those ones that struggle with getting in the water. How organized was the instruction? Do you feel your child's confidence has improved? Do you feel your child's swimming abilities have improved? Do you feel your child is safe while they're at lessons? Does your child have more knowledge of how to be safe in and around water? And is there anything else you'd like to see added to our program? I gave a handful of the results from the surveys in the next few slides. So how satisfied are you with the lessons? 4.94, they were satisfied with how things went and we had about 50 parents respond back. And then the next question, and the next one. And how satisfied are you with the guards as instructors? 4.79, one of the feedbacks on that, and I, like I said, I have some, there's negative feedback, I look, it's not negative. It's for me, it's, this is where we need to improve. Some of the guards get nervous when kids cry. I'd love to have an opportunity to work more with the guards on what to do when that happens versus me having to step in. So that just comes with time. Do you feel, do you feel the staff are appropriately dressed? We had 100%, parents were happy with all of our guards. Class sizes for level of instruction, we were 98%. They were happy with how big the class sizes were or how small they were, depending on which age group they were in. Sorry, this, I didn't mean to make it come. Next one, there, how organized was the instruction? There was a 4.91. Do you feel your child's confidence in the water improved? 98%. As your child's swimming ability improved, 100%. Every parent felt their child's swimming abilities improved. Do you feel your child is safe when they are taking lessons? 100%. Does your child have more knowledge how to be safe in and around water? 98%. I'm sorry about that. Parents comments. Maybe more diving instruction for students who want to learn that skill. That is something I would love to be able to add, I just need to find a diving instructor who wants to work with young kids. My son did swim lessons at Holiday Valley for the past three years, he did them at Salamaga this year, he has learned more. And the time he was here on Holiday Valley has taught him in three. I can't thank everyone enough, thank you. My son has never been a fan of water, never even ever, if the nurse made a comment, she had never in 40 years come across an infant who disliked their first bath so much as he is. The program has changed that, he loves to go in the A C C, he is willing to jump off the diving board, he looks forward to swim class. The past weekend, he realized that he wasn't getting his bag ready and he asked if we could go to the A C C pool. We did, but he missed his friends and they were referring to the guards. They consider them their friends, they want to go see their guards, those are their instructors. I think Anna and her team are fantastic and they really couldn't ask for more. My kids were somewhat fearful in the beginning and jumping off the diving board at the end. It's a fantastic program. I feel my son, everything is perfect for his age, I love how the instructor pushes him in a positive way, builds confidence. But I feel the pool water should be warmed up a little bit, well, for three degrees next year, at least, three degrees. While the program, the teacher has changed my son's life, he is now enjoying his time in the water and wants to swim, jump off the diving board. Had you told me this program would have had, had this much of a positive impact, it would have looked better sooner. There's a ton of feedback, there's way more than that. I want to say there was one negative comment, I think it was just more, I do morning during the week. They wish there was something for working parents, it's hard for them to get here. I'm also a working mom and I want to go home and see my kids a little bit in the summer. So I wish I had a little bit more accommodation to that, other than that, there's been so much positive feedback. It's been great, this was great result and if you guys want any other of the results, I'd be happy to share whatever the forums is, you can look at all that stuff. And do you guys have any questions? I'm sorry it took me three years to get to a board meeting to introduce myself to, you know, tell you what we were working on. So like I said before, a little more training with the guard when kids are crying or being a little bit more stern. Notting off the lifeguard chair, we got that, we got it under control this year, I'll tell you what, we got this. But kids look forward to those guards, they're your friend, they're their friends, they have my, that's my swimming instructor, they see him outside of school, they see them on that football field, they get excited to see them after getting to know them on a personal level. It's just been great, and again, sorry it took me three years to get here. So is there any other questions you have for me?
Once the kids take the swimming lessons, you said the USA Swim Program?
The SAC program now, yes.
So do they get information on that?
I do pass that along, absolutely, yeah. I'm hoping that even my daughter does participate in that this year.
Oh nice.
So we'll see if I have the extra time to get her to where she needs to be. Yeah, the SAC program's another great program that started up again. I do, once they're in that point of getting their flip turns and their strokes, like you need to do this, this is the next step, this is what you want to do, see if you like the competition. We did have a diving coach in from Perdonia, one of the best diving coaches in the area. He actually took a couple of my older ones that did have their strokes, they were interested in diving and he was welcoming them into their group. They enjoyed learning a little bit more about diving this year, so it would be nice if I could have another person to, hey, you take these kids, they can do that over here while we're working over on these things. It would be nice to be able to add that in, because I think a lot of kids would enjoy that part of things as well.
It's really a great program, you've done a good job. Especially like you said, with the water, we have water around us, so it's so important for the kids to understand it.
Yes.
You know, I, of course, I grew up around the water, so.
Yes.
And so do my kids, so when people say they're afraid of the water, it's like, okay, you can bring in the water, but there's a rear ass here for a lot of people and it's such a great program to help these kids get over that fear itself. Anything we can do as a board? You know, let us know, because we want to, again, keep building and helping the kids and helping you, so that maybe we can get some help to, to, for certification, for, maybe there's somebody else that can help too.
Okay.
So let us know how we can help. Great job.
Thank you, thank you.
Security setup, our line going up, black Alex A.
No.
Well, that's me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have public communications, do we have anybody?
I'll move you down there.
Wherever.
Well, wherever the. First, let me say, my kids did the swim lessons last two years and for here was a little, but that was my kids, nothing to do with them. That year was like night and day. Like now we go to pools and like my older ones diving under the water, as a surprise to me, like, because I don't, I don't stay in the lessons, I watch them because I got work, so it's kind of like, surprised what's going to happen. She goes, Dan, watch this, and we went to stand, I go, okay, watch, she just went straight under. And I was like, hey. And I was like, hey, this is working. The diving board, she's right, is a little scary to them, however it is. Now they're just jumping, like, they still want, my younger one still has the ball on her back, just, or because of falling underwater, your issue that she had. But it is, come out this, I say that. Um, but the real reason I'm here, um, first of all, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, I know most of you, there are a couple of you that I don't know. My name's Jay Weis, and tonight I'm here as P U member. I do work here, but that's not an aspect that I'm here. Um, the reason I'm here tonight means a lot to my family. I'm here to talk about my father, Pete Weis. Um, he's been employed at school since nineteen seventy-five. He was hired as a physical education teacher and the boys' basketball coach. Uh, after starting coaching here in numerous other sports as well, football, golf, and tennis over the years, we kinda just worked his way through other ones. He's also served as a school's athletic director before he retired. Uh, he retired from teaching in two thousand and eight, but has remained as a basketball coach ever since then. After retiring, he was asked to come back to coach, in a sense, coach J B Boys, Modified Boys, and the Girls varsity. It's kinda gone differently. J B Boys, Modified Varsity Girls, back to Modified Varsity, now he's back to J B Boys. Um, he's also been a substitute teacher since retiring, mostly the winter, with weather comes around, it's golf, well. For rainy days, he still comes and sells. Uh, this winter, he's gonna be coaching the J B Boys for what's gonna be his forty-ninth consecutive season at the school. Uh, he's gonna be reaching a major milestone this year, which, how we don't think many people in the area can say. Game seventeen in this upcoming season is gonna be his one thousandth career basketball game coach at this school. Um, and God willing, next year he'll be doing it, and it'll be his fiftieth consecutive season. Um, his passion and dedication over the years has never changed. I've always told my, told people, anybody ask my father, please, that is great. Uh, he's been recognized as a recipient of two notable awards due to his dedication as a coach and manager of youth in our district. Over the last several years, he's been inducted into the Catarrocks County Hall of Fame, the Section Six Hall of Fame, and the most recent one, and the most impressive in my mind, is the New York State Basketball Hall. Um, with that being said, I understand this is a big ask, and I know nothing will be decided anytime soon. Um, I'm here to ask the Salamanca Board of Education to dedicate the basketball court here in our gymnasium, in his name, and that being the Pete Weis Court. He's very humble when it comes to the accolades he's received from coaching, and to be honest, he has no clue that I'm here. Um, I didn't tell him, I'm not willing to tell him. Whatever does happen, I'd like to be as surprised. Just whatever.
Your secret is safe.
Well, drink the pants, you can get out. If it does, it does. I mean, I already did.
It's on Facebook.
Yeah, trust me, it's Facebook. He goes out there, he's not gonna block this. Somebody might say it, but if it happens, it happens.
It's a good surprise.
Um, honorary history and continued dedication coaching here at Salamanca by naming the court after him would be the ultimate way to leave his loyalty and hardworking mentality, he has instilled in our campus players and students. And as he always said to me, leave it all on the court. Uh, once again, I'd like to thank everybody for your time.
And so, um, thank you for bringing that, and the board will definitely consider it.
I appreciate that. You're so good, man. Thank you, Jay.
Mr. Miller is not going to be with us tonight, so he's excused, so we don't have anything for Title VI, but he said he doesn't have anything. Um, we have no other public comment, so we can move on and quickly flip the page. The central office message. Baron, I think not, it's nothing, not one thing, not one. Okay.
I can't compete. I can't even repeat the menu, cuz I forgot what it was. I know it was chicken and burger and dogs and.
And those are, uh, what, twenty-nine and?
Twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
Okay. Everybody can get out there. We can move on to the Board of Education message. Christian, you want to start us off?
All right. Um, well, they're not here anymore, but I, you know, Chad and Anna, I wanna commend them on their, on their great work. I believe she said that ten to twelve lifeguards um this, this, the summer, which is impressive. My mom helps run a campground, high base campground, and how hard it is to obtain lifeguards and, you know, to keep them and train them and have them do a good job with, you know, our precious children and, you know, our community's kids. So I wanted to commend them on their successes, one hundred and three kids, that's amazing, and um. It really nothing else. I mean, I'm just excited to get these kids back in school and excited for, for fall sports, for football season, for, you know, all the exciting things that come with the fall. Um, and, you know, I just got a note here for Jay, I mean, and his dad's accomplishments. I've been coaching these last few years, ever since my kids have gotten old enough to play sports, and um, you know, I know the commitment that goes into that. So I wanted to just commend Mr. Pete Weis and their family and their years of service, accomplishments, so.
Exciting to see the swim program or camp or whatever happens this summer, for sure. That, that's amazing, you know, when my grandchildren get a little bit older, maybe they'll be able to participate in that. Um, it's important, water safety is important. Been kinda seeing all of the, um, the camps wrapping up on Facebook, you know, that's exciting, you know, a little participants and stuff. It's really good that give the kids something to do. This morning, I got to go to the New Warrior Academy and see some presentations going on. That was also exciting, good stuff happening there too. There's, just seems to be good stuff happening all around. So, I guess.
I guess that's. Awesome. Thank you. That.
Now, they, I took a lot, what I was gonna say, that swim programs are a big thing. It's nice to see that the pools didn't utilize and, you know, definitely on the lifeguard stuff, that we're, I've done this summer. That, that's been the topic that everybody's been short on lifeguards. It's nice to see a program that we can add to that. It's, you know, it's very young, it's there, taking into that, also be able to find some summer jobs. Um, the other thing is just, uh, summer flew by, and it's the last meeting before school begins. The next one, the kids will be in place. Uh, the chaos will begin. They, I just wanted to let everybody know to enjoy those few last weeks here of planning and preparation and a couple of weeks, everybody gets to really go to work, the year begins.
I'd also wanna commend us with, because I'm kinda regretting not putting my kids in there. So I was like, open swim draft. I'll be sending them up next year. That's pretty impressive.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't, can't believe it's the end of summer already. Um, I'm looking forward to having, uh, students back in school. Um, starting after Labor Day, and I'm glad to see such a robust swim program in Salamanca. And it's also nice to see all the, the, uh, students that participated in our summer camps. Um, I guess that's all I have for tonight.
Awesome. Thanks, Dan. Mr. John?
Yeah. Well, thank you all. Between every one of you. Thank you. All the staff, everybody, thank you. You know, I know there's a lot we worked this summer, and I know there's a lot who took the summers off. Doesn't matter. Couple of weeks, it's go time. I can't wait. I can't wait. Yeah, intense, isn't it? This is our last meeting before school starts, so we'll see you all again after school starts. It's exciting. I'm excited. I was looking forward to this time of year. Um, just get the ball rolling again. Yeah, summer flew by, which is good. Hopefully it'll be snowing next week. We're gonna be getting on the slopes. Uh, Holiday Valley has their six-passenger chair going up, so you get up to the top of Marty Ball a lot quicker. So everyone's anxious for the snow, so just keep thinking snow.
Keep plugging those screen setups.
Yeah, but, um, no, a lot of good stuff happening. You all know, I'm not gonna rehash everything. Everyone knows what, what good stuff we're doing. Um, but again, just thank you all. Appreciate everything you guys are doing. You know what?
Thanks, Carrie. Yeah, it's, it's nice to hear the positive things that we're doing with all of our different camps and um, and Carrie's right, thank everybody, because everybody does put in a lot of, lot of hours for, especially Chad, putting all the teams together. Um, if you don't have kids going to school, you don't realize how much you actually, how much you actually do with the camps. I do hear from different parents, so it's really awesome to see how the kids are, are participating and um, gives them something else to do during the summer. So that's awesome, and I am looking forward to kids coming back to school. Not the busy time for all of the administrators and all the staff getting ready. Um, it'll be exciting for the welcome back picnics. I'm, I would like to come to those. Thanks to all of our good food for everyone, and uh, that's about it for me. How about you, guys?
Just a couple of quick notes. Um, thanks to, uh, the Soaks, Mr. Pay. Last week, they had a open house for the new wing. Um, it went over very well. It was nice to be able to open up that section um, ahead of schedule and be able to have our students come in and see what it looks like. And I watched, uh, so play with a couple of students on Lego wall, so stuff's been open for only a matter of a couple of days and already, that's great to see. Um, yesterday, started our new Warrior Academy, which is our new teacher academy for our new instructional staff. A lot of work goes into that as well, and it's really nice to see so many people who step up to support from uh, information technology to safety and security, to Native American Studies, to our instructional coaches, I mean, you name it. Uh, everyone has had an opportunity to go through. Tomorrow is their last day, and they will spend the day at the, uh, Seneca, uh, Bureau Boy Museum, uh, taking Seneca One, which is a three-hour course. Uh, and then they'll be spending the afternoon working with their mentors, uh, and building those relationships. So, uh, again, a lot of work goes into that, and I just wanna thank all of those individuals, and once again, welcome our new flight. And as we've said, we're only a few days away, um, from our students, and we wanna just remind everyone that our, uh, our picnics are next week, uh, Wednesday and Thursday, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
Tuesday and Thursday.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday. Thank you.
That's probably.
Yeah.
All right. All right. We will move on to our consum agenda, so we need a motion to approve the consum agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie, second by Brad. Are there any questions on any of the items? On favor? Opposed, abstaining motion. Next, we have our policies under openness, our policy fifty-five twenty, a couple revisions from last meeting, so we need a motion to approve, uh, that policy.
Motion.
Motion by Christian.
Second.
Second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Hi. Opposed, abstaining motion. New business, we have our, a bid for wood floor refilling, refinishing, so, uh, the bids were received on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three for the amount of thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars by Wayfair Sports Floor, so we need a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Motion by Brad. Second by Tracy. Are there any questions?
Yeah. Neil, call us when we're done.
Um, actually, I will turn it over to Karen in a moment here, but this is for the resurfacing and a real standard branding stuff too in there. And really, a total overhaul of the appearance of ours. Um, we know that, uh, there have been some issues that they really surfaced over the past year with, um, the actual playing surface. That has been a point of contention for some of our athletic teams, particularly our basketball teams, so our goal is to get that done uh, as soon as possible. At the same time, uh, we're in the process of finalizing our new logo, which will be placed on there as soon as we get it run through the board as well, uh, get their approval, so we're kind of excited about that. But for further details, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Karen.
Before has haven't been done in a number of years. Um, probably pre-my years here, it's a long time. Um, so it's gonna be completely sanded down, um, to the finish, or to the, what I mean? Then it's gonna be all refinished and repainted. Um, Chad's got a new color scheme, a little bit more red color in there. A little bit more gray on the floor instead of white lettering. So, um, with the new logo, if that one gets approved, then it will be all nice and bright and shiny, and then we also have, um, trying, V S B graphics coming in to give us some other branding stuff that we can put on the walls. Um, not only in there, but also in the three cafeterias, the two in the high school and the one in, um, the multiple classroom. So we'll have a lot more branding, it'll be a lot more, uh, less institutional, and in any of those spaces, there'll be a lot more, like, for kids to to eat lunch and to play gym and all the other things that happen.
What's the tentative start date on that?
I think it's mid-September. I wish Chad was still here. It's mid-September.
What's that do for the structure?
They'll use pool or the other gym or outside or.
So tell us more about this logo change.
Well, it's not really a change. We, well, it's an update of the, um, Warrior logo that we have. So Mr. Waterman has presented to us a updated version of the existing Warrior logo. Uh, we have set that off to be digitized and to be converted into a format that uh, can be used in certain places like the, uh, print shop, uh, orderery, and throughout the district. Uh, I just need to meet with Mr. Waterman to get his final approval and make sure that he's good with the colors and everything, and then that will come to the board for approval as an update of our Warrior logo.
Okay, so that his, his newest version will be put on the gym floor.
That is correct. So we're kinda excited about that, very much. Yes. Sure, yes, actually. Uh, so I do, and while we're talking about branding, I guess if we keep talking about this, this point. Um, Mrs. McGarra has worked with Gabrielle Papa, who's our, one of our consultants for the Native American team, and has contracted with, uh, Randy Spruce, former student, for some artwork that will go in the Native American suite. So this is a mock-up of what we're gonna see. Why don't I just take that and set it around?
We've all seen it.
They are all set.
Oh, okay.
If anybody hasn't seen Randy's artwork, it's absolutely beautiful. It does. It's fantastic artwork.
And it's kind of exciting that it's one of our own students.
So in future.
If you wanted to, with a more detailed, you know, if you.
Um, so in the Native American suite, there's really been two spaces that are really, um, we were looking for something different to be put on the walls in there. One of them is really kind of behind the main desk in there, and that's gonna be the larger, um, panel, which is the picture that you're looking at of the inversion like that. Um, and then there's another section in, uh, sort of in the hallway. It's more of an instructional space. There'll be two large green TVs in there that can be used, um, for educational purposes and teaching purposes. So within that, she will have other designs and support, um, painted on. She's gonna do all that, all it, all of it by hand, um, drawing and painting and, uh, finalizing. So she's working on designs right now to put in the second panels, um, but I'm excited about seeing what it looks like, cuz her stuff is just, it's so unique and it's beautiful, and she's from here, and it's just, I was super excited that she was interested in doing it.
Bill, what do you think?
I can't see that far, Carrie.
Oh. We'll have to email it to you.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion by Brad, second by Tracy. All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstaining motion, Carrie. Item B is our standard workday and recording resolution, so we need a motion, motion by Carrie. Is that Brad? Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
I.
Abstaining motion, Carrie. Sorry, Bill, if you forget.
That's right.
Uh, next, we are creating some positions, three, uh, U P K teaching assistant positions, effective August twenty-second, so we need a motion to approve those positions. Motion, motion by Tracy. Second by, was that Christian? Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed, abstaining motion, Carrie. Item G is our contract with Catarrocks, L D D, Erie, Wyoming, Tony Bosse's. So we need a motion to approve the contract, or I first, twenty twenty-three, the period of twenty twenty-three. So we need a motion to close the contract, or I first twenty twenty-three, the June period of twenty twenty-four, at a curriculum rate of three thousand dollars. So we need a motion to approve that Bosse's contract. Motion, motion, Tracy, second by Brad, are there any questions? All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion Kerry. Item E is our contract with Chad Little Valley for soccer merge, so we need a motion to approve the soccer merge company.
Motion.
Second, motion by Chad, second, second by Christian, and any questions?
Yeah, give us a little bit of background.
Sure, so this merger has been, uh, quite a long time. We have merged with, uh, Cat Little Valley for the purpose of boys varsity soccer, our numbers are getting up there, uh, right now, it's about fifty fifty for the team. We're optimistic that this might be one of our last times that we have to complete the merger, but it is something that has seen success in the past.
So it could like, it could potentially just be like a temporary, like a couple of years solution or whatever for.
Yep, so we've merged with them because we didn't have the numbers here, uh, sometimes some of our sports get stretched a little bit then. And Cat Little Valley was in the same situation several years ago, so we merged those, uh, us with them, so that we could both feel the successful team. Our numbers have started to go up, and our goal is to not necessarily have to merge with other teams or other districts, uh, but at this point in time, we find it necessary in order to provide this for, uh, male athletes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, since you're on the topic, so if we have a sport that's running low on numbers, how would a merge be initiated, are there multiple paths for that?
So what initially happens is the athletic director needs to sort of identify that as a concerning, it is not something that necessarily happens overnight, uh, so this is usually, there's many times to lead up into this, meaning we see that the numbers are starting to dwindle, or sometimes if we're starting a new sport, um, we wouldn't anticipate the numbers that are necessary. Mr. Bertozzi or the athletic director would work with Section Six to go through a process, uh, he would be much more, uh, adept at providing the finite details on that, but it really starts with the athletic director saying, look, we really want to run this program, and then, um, also finding another district that would be willing to, to merge, so in, in that case, there's a lot of cooperation that has to go on, typically between neighboring districts, because we wouldn't want to necessarily merge with a district that's a couple, you know, that's forty-five minutes away, which makes it much more challenging for our athletes and coaches.
What's, what's the financing of it, if there's a merge?
Typically, it's been, uh, split fifty fifty, just for sport. Uh, sometimes we will have uniforms that are, uh, specific to that particular team, so it wouldn't necessarily be the Warriors, it would be some typically a combination of two, uh, team names. So, but generally, everything is.
Do we have any other question? Then we have a motion by Chad, second by Christian, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, opposed, abstaining, motion Kerry. Item, item eight is our personnel consent agenda. So item B, we need a motion to approve all the action items worth living in. Second, motion by Chad, second by Kerry, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion Kerry. Item C is our contract for our new assistant superintendent for academic services. So we need a motion to approve, um, the contract for Dr. Neil Contrallo as new assistant superintendent, effective August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three through June period of twenty twenty-six. We need a motion to approve that contract.
More.
Motion by Christian.
Second.
Second by Brad. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion Kerry. And now, introduce.
Yes. That should be Chrissy's.
Hello.
Interferences.
I'm glad to be here. Board of Ed meeting ever. Uh, Christine will be joining Prospect Elementary as her leading interventionist, um, we are super, super excited for her to be, uh, at our school, she comes with a wealth of knowledge, um, so we're, we're excited for that seamless transition as she's aware of a lot of the interventions that we already use at Prospect, so we're very excited to have her. Thank you.
Do you have a speech plan?
Nope. I'm just happy that my technology was working.
We're welcoming.
Thank you for inviting me.
I am also pleased to introduce Dr. Petrello, who is our new assistant superintendent for academic services. She most recently comes to us from a principalship in Lockport at the MFL Nap Center, maybe at school. Previous to that, she has worked in higher education, well, she had a couple other, she had other principal leadership role, but then had several years in, uh, graduate education and undergraduate education at the college level, both at Niagara University, Canisius College, Damon College, I think our paths actually crossed there at some point in time. Previous to that, she was a elementary school teacher and a literacy specialist. She has a master's degree in educational leadership, a doctorate in literacy and reading education, um, and a Master of Science in education as well. So one of the things that makes, um, enables her to be a successful candidate here is that we know our focus moving forward is on reading and literacy primarily at the elementary and intermediate level. And Dr. Petrello comes to us with a significant amount of experience, both in the, uh, science, uh, of reading, but also in the art of teaching, and she is a good mix of both, as well as positive leadership experience, so we're very excited to have, welcome her to, uh, the Warrior family.
Now, uh, we will hold on.
I'd like to say it was talking about, uh, the children coming back, knowing the couple of weeks. Well, I've only met one child so far, so I'm kind of excited to meet children. One of our presenters brought her little daughter, and that I'm excited to meet the children. Um, what Dr. Eeler said is exactly true, um, in pedagogy and teaching is important, it's important to me, and I would say content as well, as far as, um, literacy acquisition, literacy development, and I'm anxious to get my hands on the material, and spread out and meet people in the school, so happy to serve.
What does it, can you turn to the camera so people can see you?
Now, you can come on down and do the, uh, Board of Office for, um, the Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services.
Hi, Dr. Camille Contrallo, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that will faithfully discharge duties of assistant superintendent for academic ser- services according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
It's like Kerry would say, make our kids smarter. For that, uh, we have our board information reports. We had our third meeting of our policy fifty-five twenty, which we approved in our upcoming events. Again, uh, opening day for staff, it's twenty ninth, we have our summer picnics on the twenty ninth from five to six thirty for Prospect. The thirtieth, there's a media and the high school, again, five to six thirty, so we're welcoming everybody. Enjoy Labor Day, because it's last time, last day before we start the first day of school on the fifth. The next Board of Education meeting is, uh, twelve, uh, so we look forward to seeing everybody there. Then Indigenous Education Committee meeting will be, uh, four thirty, ready, on the thirteenth, so with that, we need a motion, we adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Christian.
Second.
Second by Kerry. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion Kerry. Thank you.